Oh. The hidden red light. Well, good morning. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for October 3, 2023. We'll start out with introductions in the room first. I'm Pat Malone, Benton County Commissioner.
Good morning, Zan Ojuro, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Lance Carney, County Council.
Rick Crager, Chief Financial Officer.
Welcome. We have anybody joining us online?
Peggy Lynch, Legal Women, Fodus of Oregon, just watching.
Morning. All right. Are there any announcements this morning? Very none. We'll move on to review and approve our agenda. There is one change, 7.2. We are not doing that. Natural areas, parks, and events is going to apply next spring. So with that change, I assume our agenda is approved. Next up is comments from the public. We have two people signed up. Cheryl Van Loon, would you come to the microphone? And there's a black button that the poses to you. You press that, then the red light comes on high on the deck.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Van Loon. I live at 154 South Hurst Street in LC. Dear members of the Board of Commissioners, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to you as a concerned citizen of LC Benton County to bring to your attention an issue that I believe requires your immediate attention and action. I'm a property owner and a member of the LC Citizen Advisory and Budget Committee. I would like to speak about the lack of transparency dealing with Benton County planning. I would like to reference my emails sent to the Board of Commissioners on September 25 at 6:06 a.m. and September 29, 2023, at 2:41 p.m. I have contacted Benton County Planning, Benton County Public Works, requesting information regarding what I believe to be improper or possibly unlawful lot line adjustments permits and lack of oversight due to an unlicensed individual conducting construction to develop property on 182 West Main Street. The little amount of information that has been provided to me has shown lot line adjustments have been made, but I have yet to be able to find any partitions or any proof of it pre-existing buildable lot. What I'm asking for are simply public records that have continued to be ignored and disregarded. I understand that you, as our elected officials, have the power and responsibility to address this issue. I believe that taking actions on this matter will greatly benefit our community and align with our values and goals of our county. I kindly request that this issue be added to the agenda for the next board meeting. I am confident that your leadership and commitment to our community, we can find a resolution that will benefit all residents. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to your response and to seeing this issue addressed at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could give a copy to the recorder.
And I just wanted to mention that at least two of us commissioners have followed up with our staff regarding this issue. I'm happy to follow up with you after the meeting unless one of the other commissioners would prefer to do so. Okay.
All right. Thank you. And next up is Sean Collins. And like I usually do, I forget three minutes or less would be appreciated.
Try and hit my mark.
Morning, Sean.
Morning. I'm here today to give you an update on Unity Shelter and the status of our emergency shelter and other operations. Unity Shelter recently received two funding awards, one from IHNCCO and one thanks to the help of the county's coordinated office from the state of Oregon as part of House Bill 5019 funding. These two rewards provide nearly 1.5 million to support emergency shelter in the coming year. And we're very grateful for the support that we've received from these two funders and the strong support we've received from donors recently. With this funding, the natural questions we've received from many are how soon can you reopen the men's shelter and can you operate year round? We're still sorting out the answers to these questions as well as questions about how to fund the balance of our operations in Safe Place and Third Street Commons. The current plan is to reopen the men's shelter sometime in November and operate through the cold weather months. During this period, Room at the End will return to being a women's shelter, but with expanded capacity of 50 beds. In the spring of 2024, the men's shelter would close again to allow renovations that are required to fully meet building code for emergency shelter. We have to do that to operate year round. This approach is not ideal. The HOPE Board's recommendations are for year round shelter. And that certainly aligns with the needs of the community, but without additional funding, this is an approach that Unity Shelter believes we can afford right now. It's worth noting that as the only low barrier shelter and transitional housing provider in Corvallis and Benton County, we expanded dramatically during the pandemic to meet rising demand. While the formal pandemic has ended and related funding is largely gone, the need has not diminished and has only grown. We will continue to be impacted by the pandemic and the increased demand for services in our community for a long time. As we expand shelter for women and restore the men's shelter to full operation, we also have to recognize that there are still great gaps in service capacity in our community. We currently operate with a waitlist for both men and women at Room at the End and see 50 to 60 unsheltered people daily at the hygiene center. And those numbers are matched by numbers at the drop-in center, which is about 75 a day, I think. Third Street Commons, which currently operates as a shelter, is scheduled to stop operating next summer, and that'll remove 24 beds from the community capacity. And the Emergency Hotel Shelter Program that we operated since August of last year has had to close for lack of funding. In that program, we've been able to house families and medically fragile clients who would otherwise not do well at shelter. It's critical that we preserve the shelter capacity that we have and plan for expansion of transitional and supportive housing and find better ways to serve the needs of our unsheltered neighbors. This takes sustained funding and community commitment. And while providing these services is not cheap, it's far cheaper than camp sweeps, an overloaded emergency room, and overtaxed EMS staff. It's not enough to engage with HOPE and the Coordinated Homeless Response Office and others to develop plans to meet the growing needs of those without shelter and stable housing. It's going to take investment. I encourage you to review the priorities for the ARPA funds that are still held in reserve and consider funding not only bricks and mortar projects, but the essential services that happen inside those buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is our proclamation proclaiming October as Hispanic Heritage Month, and we have a wonderful turnout here. I was thinking maybe they're coming to see if I do a nice, long speech this morning. Apparently not. So first up, our district attorney, John Haraldson, will read our proclamation and then I think Ricardo Contreras. What's that? Well. And we have plenty of chairs.
Thank you, Chair Malone, and thank you to the commissioners for giving us this opportunity to really put our voices in room in a very, very meaningful way. Before I introduce myself, I wish for my colleagues here to introduce themselves and then present the proclamation.
Thank you so much, DA Haraldson. My name is Cynthia De La Torre. Usually her pronouns, and I work for Benton County's Health Department.
And good afternoon. My name is Jessica Rodriguez Salgado, and I'm a community health worker with Casa Latinos Unidos.
And good morning. My name is John Haraldson Suadis Rodriguez Gutierrez Vayesteros Delada. I am a proud citizen of Mexico. I'm a proud citizen of the United States. I represent a first generation family that has lived through much of what we're going to be underscoring in this proclamation. I want to thank the commissioners for really making a poignant point with respect to this proclamation as it really recognizes and validates so much of what is contributed by our Hispanic community. Very briefly, I will simply state that as someone who was raised in a collectivist environment, I feel a connection to all Latinos, those that are present and those that are not with us today. And I read this proclamation with that spirit. In the matter of proclaiming September 15 to October 15, 2023 Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, proclamation. During the National Hispanic Heritage Month, we pause to celebrate the immeasurable contributions Hispanic and Latinx individuals have made to the nation. The history of Hispanic and Latinx people in the U.S. predates the founding of our nation with roots in the land as indigenous people who have shaped the fabric of this country. Hispanics and Latinx have overcome great obstacles to persevere and flourish in every sector of our society. With a national theme, Latinos driving prosperity, power, and progress in America, Benton County's observance celebrates the histories, cultures, and the contributions made by Hispanic Americans who trace their roots to Spain and other Spanish-speaking countries in North America, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean, and they all will continue to make in the future. As we continue to address the challenges of equality and social justice that many Hispanics and Latinx individuals still face, the community is also strong and resilient. This month, we honor Hispanic American communities and recognize their growth in our population, the increasing political representation, and their economic successes, all of which have and continue to pave the way for the rise and recognition of Hispanics and Latinx as undeniable positive contributors to our country and local community. Hispanic Heritage Month is an incredible, incredible opportunity to speak with one voice, acknowledge the crucial role that Hispanic and Latinx people play in shaping the future of our country and the world, and to celebrate and recognize Hispanic and Latinx as decision makers, employers, employees, suppliers, consumers, and community. From education to income, Latinx are advancing our communities in a positive direction. Progress is inherent to Hispanic and Latinx people because what truly unifies us as a community is the desire to move forward. And that is great for all because as a nation and as a country, we progress together. In reflecting on our nation's rich Hispanic heritage, let us take pride in our unique and vibrant history and recommit to a shared future of freedom, power, prosperity, and opportunity for all. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that September 15 to October 15, 2023, is Hispanic American Heritage Month, adopted this third day of October, 2023, signed this third day of October, 2023, Benton County Board of Commissioners. Nancy Wise, Chair, Pat Malone, Commissioner. Zan Ojuro, Commissioner.
Thank you, DA Haraldson. I'd first like to introduce Jessica Rodriguez Salgado with Casa Latinos Unidos. Casa Latinos Unidos is a community-based organization founded in 2008. They serve our Hispanic and Latinx community in Benton and Lynn Counties. I invite you to get to know them and their amazing work.
Thank you, Cynthia. En lo referente a la proclamación, 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre, mes de la herencia hispana en el condado de Benton. Durante el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, nos detenemos para celebrar las inmensas contribuciones que los hispanos y latinos han hecho en nuestra nación. La historia de los hispanos y latinos en los Estados Unidos antecede a la fundación de este país con sus orígenes en esta tierra como pueblos indígenas. Los hispanos y latinos han superado grandes obstáculos para preservar y prosperar en todos los sectores de nuestra sociedad. Con el tema nacional, Latinos impulsando la prosperidad, el poder, y el progreso en Estados Unidos, la comemoración del condado de Benton celebra las historias, culturas, y todas las contribuciones hechas por los hispanos y latinos que tienen raíces en España y otros países de habla hispana de Norteamérica, Centroamérica, Sudamérica, y el Caribe, y todo lo que seguirán haciendo en el futuro. Mientras que continuamos reconociendo que hay desafíos de igualdad y justicia social que aún enfrentan muchos hispanos y latinos, esta comunidad también es fuerte y resiliente. Este mes le hacemos homenaje a las comunidades hispanas y latinas y reconocemos su crecimiento en nuestra población, la creciente representación política, y sus éxitos económicos. Todo lo cual ha abierto el camino y continúa abriéndose para el ascenso y el reconocimiento de los hispanos y latinos como indudables contribuyentes positivos a nuestro país y la comunidad local. El mes de la herencia hispana es una oportunidad extraordinaria para hablar con una sola voz, reconocer el papel importante que los hispanos y latinos desempeñan en la configuración del futuro de nuestro país y el mundo, y para celebrar y reconocer a los hispanos y latinos como líderes y quienes toman decisiones, empleadores, empleados, proveedores, consumidores, y comunidad. Dentro de la educación y el sector económico, los latinos están haciendo avanzar a nuestras comunidades en una dirección positiva. El progreso es importante para los hispanos y latinos porque lo que realmente nos une como comunidad es el deseo para seguir adelante. Y eso es grandioso para todos porque como nación y como condado progresamos juntos. Al reflexionar sobre la rica herencia hispana de nuestra nación, sintámonos orgullosos de nuestra historia única y vibrante y comprometámonos a compartir un futuro de libertad, poder, prosperidad, y oportunidad para todos. Por lo tanto, por la presente se proclama que del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de 2023 es el mes de la herencia hispana, adoptado el día 3 de octubre 2023, firmado el día 3 de octubre del 2023. Gracias.
Thank you.
I would like to move that we proclaim 15th of September through the 15th of October as the Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, proclamation number 2023-017, and to note the record that Pat Malone is Chair. Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and thank you. And it's great to see a room full of people coming together to celebrate. And that was a nice breakfast in our lunchroom. So looking forward.
And I just wanted to thank our staff for making it possible. I think Sarah Siddiki and Corey Grogan and all the other people who helped plan and set up the room today. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, kind of a letdown now, but next up is the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar. So before I second that, I had a question about minutes that I caught at like 5:05 and everyone was gone. See, there was a part highlighted in yellow that looked like it was still part of the draft minutes, like we were looking to insert some information there. Okay, so we will pull that, fix it, and bring it back next meeting.
Perfect. Okay, I move approval of the consent calendar as noted with the removal of the September 5, 2023 board meeting minutes. Thank you for catching that. Second.
All in favor of approving amended consent calendars, say aye.
Aye.
carries. Old Business, 6.1, second reading of ordinance number 2023, base 032, amending the Adair Village urban growth boundary, Darren Nichols.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a pretty quick formality. You approved the first reading of this ordinance last month, and this is the second reading of the ordinance, which is required by code in order to make a small adjustment, as you recall, essentially a mapping error totaling about a little over 4,000 square feet to the Adair Village urban growth boundary on the south end of Riles Avenue, just off the intersection with Highway 99. So unless you have questions for me, I think this morning's business is fairly quick.
I think, go ahead.
No, this is not a public hearing. This is just a motion for the second reading.
Oh.
So I'm happy to make it. Okay, I move to enact ordinance number 2023-02, excuse me, 0320, amending the Adair Village urban growth boundary by conducting a second reading of the ordinance.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Now I can read the second reading. Before the Board of Commissioners of Benton County, State of Oregon, in the matter of amending Benton County Conference Plan and zoning map regarding the Adair Village urban growth boundary ordinance number 2023-0320. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows. Short title amendments to the Benton County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Regarding the Adair Village Urban Growth Boundary. And as noted, this will take effect 30 days from today.
Thank you, likewise.
All right, moving on to item 7.1, request to apply for Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development Technical Assistance Planning Grant. Darren Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Before we get into just a little bit of discussion and background, just want to be clear. What we're asking you to do today is to authorize a grant application to the Department of Land Conservation and Development for technical assistance, both financial and technical, to help with some long-range planning priorities and also to ask the board to authorize sending a letter of support to the Land Conservation and Development Commission in support of that application. So stepping back for just a minute, this is a conversation that began in earnest with you all, I think, probably many years ago, when you began developing a longer list of long-range planning priorities. And at the same time, or kind of in that similar timeframe, the Planning Commission also was beginning to explore its role as advisors to you all for policy updates, including long-range planning recommendations. And as those two conversations began to merge in early 2022, it seemed to make sense that we sit down together with the board and with the Planning Commission and really explore what our joint priorities are or should be, and then also paths forward to address what is really a long-term and growing need for long-range planning. So you remember, we sat down in May out at the Buzell Forest Center. We had a good first conversation then and explored kind of the board's list of priorities, the Planning Commission's list of priorities, and we began to kind of understand those better and develop a shared list, a joint list of shared kind of top 10 issues. Fast forward then to this last July. We sat down again in this room to talk about vehicles or ways that we might actually get that work done. And we explored the possibility of using a tool in state statute called periodic review and specifically a voluntary periodic review work plan as one way of getting that work done. So then last week on September 26, the board and the Planning Commission sat down with members of the Department of Land Conservation and Development and some of our colleagues at Wasco County to talk in specifics about what a work plan might look like, the timeframe, the commitments. And in that conversation, there was general consensus to move forward with exploration of a specific work plan and also asking for funding to help support and technical assistance to help support any work that Benton County might undertake in that work plan. So we are asking you today to approve, formally approve, the grant application that we got in just under the wire for last night's deadline. And then we will continue the conversation that we've begun to have with DLCD staff and with LCDC Commissioners to refine and develop an actual work plan. So this is really a formality, just to get your approval to get the grant application in, and then that sort of begins kind of the work in earnest to decide how much we do or do not try to take on in the next three years. So I think that's, I think that's all I had in way of background. I'm happy to answer questions or take directions more generally, but really what we're asking you to do today is the two things. One is approve, give us authorization to apply for the grant, and then also, if you will, please give us authorization to write a letter of support from the board to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, which basically is a signal of your support and also gives us then kind of the formal approval to proceed with conversations with DLCD staff.
Any questions for Darren?
I have a couple of comments. Thank you for your work on this. Thank you for your work on this. I do support applying for this grant. I would like to say, however, that this agenda item was late. And that is not fair to our staff. It has to come in or work on their day off unexpectedly. It also makes it hard for me to properly educate myself when I'm making decisions for ninety thousand people. It also doesn't look good or very transparent to the public when they're looking for a packet that hasn't come out yet. So out of principle, I will be voting no. And in the future, I just would like all the county departments to know this, that if your late additions cause Benton County staff to work unexpectedly on their day off, I will vote no.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we waited until the board had its chance to visit with the planning commission last Tuesday to write this memo. We wanted to give you the benefit of having that conversation before we made the formal request. But we had this agenda item on for several weeks before. I apologize if that leaves you unprepared for today's conversation. I think we had hoped that that was sufficient, but my apologies.
Well, and I think there's another person that your apology would be better directed to.
Happy to deliver that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wise. I this is not just a community development issue. It is a challenge for our staff and it's a challenge for the community to be aware of what we are discussing, the decisions we're making if we don't have timely packets. So take note, but it's not just you. I'm happy to support this and I'd be happy to make the motion. I move to approve the submission of technical assistant grant application in an amount to be determined to the Department of Land Conservation and Development and direct the Community Development Director in partnership with DLCD, take the necessary steps in creating a preliminary plan, scope of work and budget for voluntary periodic review work plan. And in addition to that, I would like to authorize staff to help the board with putting together a letter of support to DLCD for this proposal.
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Kind of a point of, and I appreciate the background and the basically in the last year. Is it accurate that these reviews used to be mandatory like a decade or more ago? That did not go well and so yeah, kind of a reset on the process and now it's so voluntary and much more of a partnership going, going forward. Is that accurate?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, periodic review is one of the fundamental tenants that was put in place with Oregon statewide planning program was first kind of developed in the nineteen seventies. There was an anticipation from the start that these comprehensive plans, which are essentially a blueprint for Oregon cities and counties, both for land use and for infrastructure and for conservation, that they would need to be updated from time to time as communities grow and as conditions change. And it was anticipated that communities would update their comprehensive plans every ten years or so according to a prescribed schedule set by the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Land Conservation and Development Commission. I think unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, those workloads were large and the funding to help support that work was small. And so as a result, through the nineteen eighties and into the nineteen nineties, periodic review became really unwieldy as a tool. And so the commission and the state revamped periodic review to offer a voluntary approach, which doesn't have the same kind of enforcement teeth, is much more of a partnership-based approach to updating comprehensive plans. I've seen it work very well when it's, when it is a partnership-based approach. The really nice thing about voluntary periodic review is that it puts us at the head of the line for grant priorities, so it provides some funding. But I think equally importantly, it puts Benton County at the head of the line for assistance from state agencies that participate on what's called the periodic review assistance team. So basically it puts us in a position to be able to reach out to our colleagues at the state to help with the whatever parts of the work plan we need help with. And that is as important, if not more important than the dollars that come with this. So it really, I think it gives us a chance to move our needs to the head of the line and to advance our work plan more efficiently.
I'd like to make one more comment just for the record and for folks that may watch this meeting. And that is that given the nature of Benton County, this planning doesn't affect what's going on within cities, but it affects all of Benton County outside of cities. And for communities like LC, for instance, this could be very critically important because it'll give us an opportunity to reexamine the zoning in LC that constrains development there and it's a much needed update. So that LC, of course, is not the only community like that. I'm sure that communities like Summit and Bludgeet will also be quite interested. But LC is unique in the fact that because of the school and the clinic, there are people that move in and move out and it's hard to find housing. And the zoning is definitely an obstacle. So I've been very much looking forward to this process because of the long list of long-range priorities like water resource planning, recreation planning that need to be done at a comprehensive level with a lot of partners, but also so that we can address these chewy issues for Alpine, Bell Fountain and for LC that are very hard to address when we're just looking at applications one by one in a permit process.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Ojuro. We are keenly aware that Benton County has a responsibility to do planning for the unincorporated communities. And in some cases, those plans are really need a refresh. They're desperately in need of a refresh and we look forward to working with those communities.
I appreciate the history of how we got to this point. Think it's a little ironic that the, what used to be called the planning department doesn't have much time to do anything resembling long-range planning. Fills a large, large hole in our, though, what we should be, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you volunteering to.
And I will reiterate that I do appreciate the work that you've been doing. Thank you.
Rick.
Thank you, Chairman Malone. I guess I just wanted to quickly make a comment in relation to the process of the agenda checklist and want to just publicly apologize to staff for having to come in on Saturday. And I want to own some of the responsibility in relation to that. And certainly after we were able to get the checklist in, it was my call in terms of being able to hit the final button. So I want to publicly apologize for that. So again, don't want Darren to own all of this. This was certainly something that we all contributed to, so apologies.
Thank you, Rick. Yeah. We're working really hard to get a lot of stuff done and to keep up to speed with the demands that the community expects of us. We're proud to do it. Sometimes it's difficult to put things in. I'll be, I apologize as well. I wasn't aware. Actually, I was on the forest tour and out of, out of cell service for most of the day on Friday, so I didn't realize what was happening. So I apologize for that. A lot of this work happens at night outside of office hours in order to keep things moving. And I think we're all under a lot of demands and we're doing our best. And I appreciate the support of the board staff and the administrator's office to keep us on track and also to get our work done. But sometimes that, as it doesn't happen and I do apologize for that.
Anything else on this topic? If not, as was mentioned earlier, NAEP has withdrawn their request to apply for Oregon Arts Commission grant. They are planning on coming back and applying for ten thousand dollars instead of five thousand dollars next spring. And there was a as long as we're doing procedural. I think Tommy Douglas mentioned to me on Friday that she was planning on submitting a grant. I think that was due, the deadline was yesterday. And so maybe as part of our administrative housekeeping figure out, maybe there's a dollar amount or if there's no county funds involved, is it all right for a department to meet a deadline rather than I mean, before the board getting approval and then applying. If that would have been if they would have followed the procedure, they would have missed the yesterday's deadline. So I would guess this has come up before, but as far as I know, do we have a policy or procedure to cover something like that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I currently, the policy is written in our financial policies as approved, that it doesn't necessarily provide for that particular legal room. However, I think to your point, there are going to be times and situations where there's such a quick turnaround time and nobody wants to lose that opportunity. So part of what I've looked to institute is more of a, I would call retroactive approval. I tend to apply just so that we don't hold up our departments. Clearly, we want to be able to get in front of these things. And I think part of helping the department heads understand is that even though you may not have submitted the application, you can still put on the board several weeks in advance to kind of get things approved, even though the application isn't complete. And I think that's a communication that we can continue to reinstitute. So there are ways I think we can stay ahead of this without having the final and complete application done by the time they get in front of you. But in addition, there are going to be those situations, sometime you have just a quick turnaround. So we do have to have a retroactive type of approval process.
And this is a topic that's come up a few times and we have given authority to the district attorney's office, for instance, as an elected official to apply for these continuing grants that are allocated every two years without coming to the board of Commissioners. And the grant that we just approved for community development is another example. It's a case in point where the proposal was due yesterday and this was a retroactive approval. So we've done this over the years that I've been on the board. I think that for me as a commissioner, the most important thing is that if it's a major initiative that will have an effect on staffing, it must come before us. It's up to us to guide how we add positions, whether they're limited in duration or whether they're long-term. But if it's a proposal that's five thousand dollars to host an event, that does not necessarily rise to the level of a board level. So I think perhaps we do need to look at that policy and clarify what needs to come before us.
I guess I would just add on, Mr. Chairman, I would also encourage the department heads, and Darren and I had spoken in relation to this particular grant, but to the NAEP director, if this is a concern, I would encourage you to have a conversation with me in relation to this because this certainly is, first of all, in terms of a five thousand dollar grant, it doesn't meet the thresholds of the policy. So they would be able to move forward, but I had not heard any conversations in relation to this problem from the director. So I would encourage that person to have a conversation. I can follow back on that.
Great. I appreciate the discussion. We've kind of tapered into number eight. Is there any other business that we need to address this morning?
Well, I should have maybe said this during announcements, but we did have our new county administrator begin yesterday. However, she has to deliver her father to the airport in Portland today, this morning. So our acting county administrator is still in the seat for one last board meeting. I'd like to thank CFO Rick Crager for serving in that role for the last month and to acknowledge that Rachel McInnany will be with us when we convene as a board next week.
One more day, Rick. Come on, you can do it. Really appreciate you pitching in and keeping us moving forward. Any other business? If not, meeting adjourned.